Good evening, calling to order the regular meeting for the school district of the city of Dearborn for Monday, February 10th, 2025. Sir Secretary.
Okay, yes, roll call. Trustee Al-Jehmi.
Here.
Trustee Barry.
Here.
Trustee Petlicov.
Here.
Trustee Deambrogio.
Here.
Trustee Zar, that's me. Vice President Watts.
Here.
President Mosib.
Here.
Next item, please.
Next item is the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Tonight, we have Ms. Zahra Zrak, the principal of Becker Elementary, along with students who will lead the Pledge of Allegiance, and she'll introduce them to us.
Good evening, I'm Zahra Zrak. These are my students, Abbas Al-Dulaymi, Tatiana Youssef, and Batul Ruwe. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great job. Come on up, come on up.
Right there. In the middle.
Tatiana. Tatiana, thank you, great job.
Tatiana. Proud of you.
Batul.
High five. High five, great job.
Another round of applause for our students. Next item, please.
Next, we have the superintendent's item. Oh, sorry, superintendent's update, starting with agenda items.
Good evening, everyone, I hope you're doing well. Unfortunately, I would like to start with a moment of silence, and we had a passing of a former student in a vehicular accident, so if we could just take a few moments of silence. Thank you, thoughts and prayers are with his family. I will move down the agenda items, Mr. President. So I'll start with retirements, like we do every month. We have a few retirements this month. Nancy Chase, 26 years of service. Dr. Winifred Green, 25 years of service. Linda Gunness, over 36 years of service. Fathi Hashem, over 18 years of service. Dr. Ryan Lazar, 25 years of service. Linda Lippert, 27 years of service. Genevieve Sullivan, 35, over 35 years of service. Teresa Handhook, over 13 years of service. And Jeff Conway, 27 years of service. If we could show our appreciation and thank them through the menu. So I'll move to non-agenda items, and I have right now a presentation of a check. Mr. Ali Said, I believe. And Ms. Lamisor is going to come up. This is our grants that were received and donations to the district for robotics and athletics. And we appreciate Mr. Said's support. I've been at some of the events myself and the basketball, and I know the students are so excited, and the gymnasiums are jam-packed with parents and students, so it's a real positive, yeah.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
It's my pleasure to welcome the founder and CEO of Hype, who is also a family member, to Dearborn Schools, to the board meeting to present these two checks. Ali applied for and got approved for a grant, and he called me up and said, "We need to share it with Dearborn students and our elementary schools," and here we are. Ali will elaborate a little bit more about how we're spending that money. But it's been, if you've been to the games, you'd know the hype that's happening in those gymnasiums with the families and the employees, instructional and non-instructional, all partnering up. And just the students' enthusiasm and the momentum that's happening in these buildings is unbelievable. I'll send you all the game schedule, and I'd love to see you at one of the games.
Ali.
Good evening. I'm joined by Maha, our CFO, Maha Seba, and Billy Amon, our C- operations director, COO. The truth is, honorable board members and administrators and family members, we have an awesome district. That's the truth. Everything becomes great when we join together, and it's been an absolute honor working with all of you that had played a major role, including Lamis and my son and Dr. Glenn and many, many others. I'm here today to award, let's do the first one, $90,000, which will fund all the elementary robotics programs for all the schools that are participating this year. So we're grateful to have collaborated with the district on that project. It's fun, it's cool, but the second one is cooler. As a product of the district, you know, participating in the physical fitness award, the Presidential Fitness Award, and getting all those blue patches as a kid. You know, one thing that I wish I had was more organized sports, you know, experiences as an elementary student. Especially being that many of the kids that participate in our Hype programs at the center, the percentages are very low from the 48126, 48121, 48120 zip codes. Less than 7% of our participants come from those zip codes. So for years and years and years, we've tried to advocate for programming within the district, specifically targeting these Dearborn schools. You know, obviously, the gap was very evident, the disparities were very evident. So this year, again, thanks to the partnership we've established and the funding that we were able to receive, and hopefully, continue to receive for many, many years to come, we're able to launch a really cool elementary athletics program that includes boys' and girls' basketball, soccer in the spring, and we're going to do a cross-country program in the fall. And that cross-country program will lead an end at the Cipriano Race. So we'll have, you know, a few meets, if you want to call them, for the kids, local, stay within their neighboring schools, and then that program will grow an end at the Cipriano Race. One of the cool things we're also adding on is that fitness award. So we do want to encourage a challenge, a district-wide competition for elementary school students, possibly even take it up to the middle school students that incorporates a variety of different skill sets and skills competitions, and then to give them an award here, you know, to show who's the number-one person that can do the most chin-ups or most push-ups or the fastest runner, or whatever the competitions are that we agree on and develop. But that is something that we're all very excited to incorporate and to work with you on. And as I had mentioned, and I, we all are super excited, from our board to our administrative staff and our leadership team. We love this district. None of this would have been possible without the leadership of the district. And that really has to resonate, I mean that. You know, we have the best families, we have the best students, and we have the best leaders. And again, as a product, we're all products of Dearborn. It's an honor to serve with you and alongside you, serving our children. So thank you.
What's that check for? Save the amount of the second check.
Oh, I'm sorry, so the second check to, well, we've allocated $250,000 to run all of those four sports or athletic programs. So $250,000 has been allocated for that. I never thought we'd get to that point where we're given money, because we always need money. But it's, we're grateful.
Trustee, Trustee Watts.
Yes, so thank you for that, that is amazing. So I have a couple of questions regarding the athletics. Do we have metrics as to how many students we're hoping to get involved in the elementary sports?
Well, yeah, we have, we have the limits. For boys' basketball, it was 700. For girls' basketball, we actually anticipated a little bit fewer kids participating. The boys actually motivated the girls, and we were able to get a significant amount. That limit is 500, we're at 500 girls. For soccer, we're anticipating super-high numbers, and we've allocated funding for about 700 kids as well between all the schools. Because there's, you know, it's a bigger game. You know, eight-on-eight is what we're going to try to run for these kids. And then for cross-country, we're hoping everyone participates.
Okay.
So it could be a grand total of about, possibly 2,500 youth participating in all sports programs, excluding the fitness challenge concept. That project might, will include every child to compete.
And then also, the donation, is it a one-time fund? Is it a rolling, is it something that can be then applied for year after year once we have that final report? I say we, but it's actually you, so.
Yeah, so I was just talking to Mrs. Zrak about that before she had walked out. We're committed to this program. Whether we get the renewal of the grant or not, we're committing to this program, and God willing, it'll stay in the city of Dearborn forever. You know, there's ways that we could, you know, we can definitely save on some cost.
Okay.
You know, and reduce some of our expenditures and maintain the quality that we've experienced this year. So with that being said, it's, it's not ending.
Okay, I mean, that's wonderful.
Yeah.
And then I guess the same for the robotics. Do we know how many schools we're going to be in, or how many students? What is the metrics on that, what's the goal?
Great question, I'm going to let Lamis answer.
So we have our own funding for robotics as well, this is in addition to that. I think we have around 15 schools who could find a staff member who could lead an additional team.
Okay.
So it'll grow, I'm sure it'll grow. We were later to begin this year, just the way things fell into place. Hopefully, next year, we can start a little bit earlier and get that going a little bit earlier, and then get more teams onboard.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Trustee Petlicov.
Yeah, Mr. Said. Couple of things to kind of tag along. And I'm a 48126 resident, so I really appreciate, because you don't see enough kids, even in their own neighborhoods, participating in any kind of, you know, sporting activities anymore. So it's wonderful that we're going to continue to encourage this kind of athleticism, and it also helps feed up into the middle and high school level. That being said, how are we, who's running these programs at each of the buildings? Is it going to be somebody from the building itself? Is it somebody who understands, just like we do at middle school and high school, the rules and techniques that we need to be teaching these students? Or is it just a volunteer?
Great question. So we committed to hiring a liaison, a faculty member from each school, to be basically our point person. For each school has one liaison. And then we've encouraged, for the most part, we've encouraged parents from the team to step up and volunteer and coach. So the liaison is a paid position, the volunteer position is the coaching position. So we have, you know, someone that has direct access to, you know, policies, procedures, regulations, you know, that can talk to the custodial staff or maintenance staff, that can communicate with all parents with, you know, a click of a button. So that's our current structure. Some of the schools, we had to actually hire some of our coaching staff to fill in the gaps, which worked great as well. Parents and faculty were very receptive to that plan as well. And that's what I was mentioning with like some of the cost-cutting measures in the future, if needed, would be to, like, consider an alternative to a paid liaison position. Possibly, you know, we can encourage, and they see the value of this program, and we can encourage them to partake in it as more of a voluntarily voluntary role, or maybe a slightly less fee. But we'll determine that as funding presents itself in the future.
So one more question. Do the students just play each other in their own school buildings? Or are we having competition between schools?
Every school has a third, fourth, and fifth grade boys' team, and then we combined a JV and varsity team for all the girls' teams. There is four divisions within the district. The tractor division includes Eunice, Oakman, McDonald's, Becker, Lori, and Maples. The legacy division is what we named it, includes Henry Ford, William Ford, Miller, Gere, and Salina. There's the Thunderbird Division, Snow, don't tell me, Whitmore, DeVal, Nalan, and Long. And then the Pioneer Division, the Hague, Howard, Lindberg, River Oaks. And that was it.
Okay.
So 19 schools participated.
They all kind of, that group, that feeder group, plays each other.
Yeah, 100%, yeah, they play each other, Pioneer plays each other, but then they meet at the semifinals.
So we don't have to worry about them having to be taken across district or anything like that, which may have been part of the issue with kids participating at Hype, not having transportation.
We were worried about that.
Yeah.
And we actually have, for the girls, we have games being held every Friday. We select two teams, one from east, one from west, to play against each other, and they're held at Hype. Those are like the signature week games per week, and we have 100% participation. As a matter of fact, as many who could attest to it, the parental participation in this activity is beyond our expectation, beyond our expectation. I mean, it's a full house.
Better than them being on a screen.
Yeah, well, they're not on the street anymore, it's better than a screen.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Trustee Al-Jehmi.
Ali, I've known you for a long time, and it's just a comment. I want to commend you on the amazing program, or on Hype as a whole. I remember when you first started doing three-on-three basketball tournament, and from where it started to where it's now, you guys, you and your team, have done an amazing job.
Yeah.
And I appreciate the fact that you're giving back to the schools. You're at the schools now. Because sometimes it's difficult to get to Hype for some parents.
Of course.
But doing it at the local schools, you know, Salina and other schools is amazing. And like I said, I commend you and your team for doing an amazing job and giving back to the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Watts.
I'm just going to ask if you could share the schedule with the school board, so we can.
Yes, yeah, yeah. Yeah, well, it's one email, we'll send it.
Okay, thank you.
You have to come to a game of yours.
I've attended a game, and it's crazy, the parents.
Who'd you watch?
Their excitement, it was just amazing.
What schools did you watch?
Gere Park.
Okay.
Trustee Zar.
Yeah, I just want people who are watching in the world and in the audience to know that this doesn't really happen in a lot of other places. Dearborn is an amazingly special place where this kind of stuff happens. And so I just want to say, I love you all, I'm proud of you all. And my question is, can I play?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I got you, for sure.
No, 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 okay, cool.
Yeah, don't make promises, Ali.
No, we'll make an exception, we'll make an exception.
Thank you so much, Ali.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Maha, and Trustee Amon, too, thank you. Picture with Dr. Maleko and whomever from the trusties would like to take a picture with them. Am I getting in the picture?
I want to be in the picture.
Let's stand.
Face this way.
Go ahead, Pat, I'll wait for you guys to move. How are you, man?
How are you?
No, my knee is.
To David's point, yesterday, we held 80th birthday party for my father, and my family was like, "Oh no, Glenn will have that up before the pictures, before we leave." They were up before the halftime show yesterday, so. I also just want to mention that, yeah, I was, I went to DeVal to see the competition between schools. And when I was a teacher back in the late 90s, early 2000s at Salina, I would have loved to have been able to do this for our students. So it's just a very positive thing to be able to compete in our school, as you mentioned, Trustee Petlicov. So thank you to them. I will move along, then, Mr. President.
Sure, go ahead.
All right, next, I have my favorite thing, my favorite group in the district. I have a lot of favorites, but this is the one that I really take pride in, our superintendent student advisory council. And they're here for a report with Dr. Swayden, who does a great job leading the way. They do a lot of great things, and they're going to report on some of that. So I'm going to ask Micah, Bisan, Miriam, and Maraki to come up and provide a presentation. And I know you've seen them before.
Hello, board members. We are part of the superintendent student advisory council, and we're here today to talk about our initiatives for MLK. I am Micah Mitchell, I am currently a senior at Henry Ford Early College.
My name is Bisan Al-Zain, I'm a current senior at Dearborn High School.
My name is Miriam Al-Zain, I'm a current junior at Dearborn High School.
And my name is Maraki Tamaskin, I'm a current 11th grader at Dearborn High School.
Okay, so every year, SSAC tries to do something for Martin Luther King Junior Day. He was big on community service, and we wanted to embody that by doing something for our community every year. So this year, we volunteered at local food pantries, and we raised money for humanitarian aid in the Middle East. And we are going to middle schools to teach them about mental health.
So this year, we participated in the initiative in Zaman, where we got to help the metro Detroit with initiatives. We got to organize cans, we got to learn about like their thrifting story that people can go through. And our team helped out and organized the supplies in the pantry to help the cause. Okay, so one of our big initiatives this year is to raise awareness about the issue of bullying, vaping, and mental health in general. So we are actually, I talked about this at the last board meeting, I believe, so we are going to be visiting numerous middle schools and talking and presenting, giving them presentations and interactive games during the month of Ramadan about bullying, mental health, vaping, and the issues about surrounding these topics. And we plan to not only present them and give them the information, but also interact with them and make it a really engaging lesson. And we plan to do it during Ramadan, because we know a majority of the middle schoolers are going to be fasting. So we plan to do it as a way to not only like distract them, but to keep them entertained, as well as giving them an informational lesson about these informant issues in our district. So we're going to be doing so many fun games, and hopefully, it'll really raise awareness about the issue to them in a really interactive and fun way that'll resonate with them. So as you guys all know, the SSAC meets on a monthly basis, and tomorrow is actually our monthly meeting for the month of February. And this is a new initiative that Dr. Swayden brought up this year, so I'd like to thank her for that. Tomorrow, as an extension of our regularly scheduled meeting, all of the SSAC members will be participating in a Safe Talk Suicide Training, which is something new that Dr. Swayden brought up. It's a training that'll be facilitated by training members from the University of Michigan, Einsberg Center for Family Depression. And the main goal is to utilize interactive, open discussions and video presentations to allow us students to be able to connect with students who might be feeling suicidal, suffering from depression, and to be able to safely connect them with the many staff members in our district that'll be able to provide them support. And so this is really important, because the SSAC kind of serves as that link between students and staff. A lot of students in our district who might not be comfortable seeking help, this training will really allow us to become more receptive to that and more aware and open, so that way, we can connect those students with the right resources in the district.
And with all of these initiatives, I wanted to give a quick shout-out to someone who has been a big help to all of us. Her name is Ms. Norma Harb. She is very invested in fostering leadership in all of us. She's very passionate, and she has a lot of connections that'll help us find the best organizations to donate to, and she has just been a great help with all of this. So I wanted to give a quick shout-out to her.
Questions for the students? Trustee Petlicov.
Well, it's not really a question, it's an observation. We just had a moment of silence for a young man who lost his life again in another tragic auto accident. And we continued, the mayor was here at last month's meeting. We continue to talk and talk and talk ad nauseam. But our talking isn't making an impression. I know in the past, we've tried to utilize student members to have that safe-driving kind of conversation in the school buildings. Are we going to try to continue, besides bullying and vaping and everything else? I think we really need to try to brainstorm for how we can really finally reach the parents and students who just are seemingly not understanding the dangers and tragedies that these occurrences are causing to our community.
Okay, so this was actually a topic, I'm glad that you mentioned it, because I was talking about it with a teacher at school today, and she was telling me that, how as part of the superintendent, that we should be talking about, more about the issue of driving in Dearborn in general, especially among the high schoolers. Because I know a lot of our high schoolers, especially in Dearborn High, they tend to buy, the parents tend to buy their kids really, really nice cars. And they don't tend to like tell their kids like, "Yeah, watch out," they say those things. They don't say, "There's these dangers that can be caused by this car. There's, it has such a strong engine power, like you should be careful, you should do this, you should do that." It's not emphasized enough until an accident happens, and then everyone starts posting on their stories. And then there's like a period where there isn't anything happening, but then it starts all over again, and then another accident happens. So there's definitely something that we can incorporate in our presentations, and we do plan on addressing that issue, hopefully, in the future. And I'm glad that you mentioned it, because it's definitely a really prominent issue in our district, and it's been happening for years now. I do believe action should be taken towards it. So that's definitely something we'll think about incorporating in our presentations.
The more voices we bring, the more attention we bring, hopefully, the more behavior will change.
Yeah, 100%, thank you.
I wanted to ask the seniors on their future plans. So Micah and Bisan, what are your future plans?
Hi, so with the program I'm in, I'm a senior, but there's an extra year on top of that, where we mostly just take college classes. But I plan on majoring in sociology, becoming a professor, and getting grants to do research in order to advocate for public policy.
You're already on that route, so great. Bisan?
So after I graduate from Dearborn High, I'll be attending Columbia University this fall. I plan to study biochemistry and concentrate in public health on the pre-med track. And my goal is to eventually become a physician, but then also advocate for public health policy work to serve our underprivileged communities.
Thank you, Bisan. And thank you to all of you for what you do representing your fellow students with Dr. Maleko. Thank you.
I'll move along, it's Black History Month, and what better way to celebrate the contribution of Black Americans in the United States but with the MLK and the students doing these service projects? So we also send and have lessons in the schools, and just wanted to recognize Black Americans across the country for their contributions over many years. The next thing I have is positive news. We came out of finance committee today, and Mr. Wall runs those committee meetings with the chair and the other board members. And once again, seven years, the meritorious budget award, it's a rigorous award. We have the plaque right here. If we can give him and his department and the board a great round of applause, really. This is a big deal, it's about transparency, and not a lot of districts get this. It's from the Association of School Business Officials International. So congratulations, Tom, on the award. And like I said, the board's involved with this, the entire cabinet.
And we have five more spots you need to fill.
The next that I, thing that I want to mention is, we've talked here, and we had David and Tom.
Tom talk last month, and we're going to have it on every agenda. President Mosip and I discussed this. You know, we're talking about a potential bond. We know we're in a situation, and I can say this is now my 29th year in the district, that infrastructure is a great need in this district, probably one of the top priorities long-term. I've been talking at every event, with chatting events recently with staff and parents and whatnot, and we've had this topic going for a long time, as Mr. Wall and Mr. Mustedin discuss. We also have two RFPs that are going out. The one on Infrastructure Historical Review, they're meeting with principals right now. That was approved by the board last month. We're not yet on the one with the communication, but that will be coming, where we look at the data and information to potentially go for a bond. Now, here's the thing. We say potentially November 25, maybe in '26, and the reason is because we don't want to rush it. We want to make sure we're ready, but to let the public and the board know that by law, we would have to have a ballot proposal for a potential bond approved by August 12. That's the deadline. So if we were to do it this year for November, we would have to target July, the July board meeting, or a special meeting, if we choose. Again, it's still potential. We still have a lot of work to do, and the board would ultimately have to make that final decision based on administration recommendations after we go to the community, but we want to keep it out there. We do see the needs as we have aging infrastructure across the district. And the last thing that I did want to mention as kind of an other, I got invited to a game on, I know trustee Al-Jamii was there, and trustee Dambrosio, they invited me to play in a charity basketball game. I haven't played basketball in many years, but I said, it's, oh, trustee, President Mosip was there, I got a picture with his kids. But I said it's for a good cause. All right, I said I'd do it. It was for fundraising in Lebanon, Palestine, and Yemen, and, you know, my wife said, your objective is just not to get hurt by the end of the game. It was a very long game, but I do play hockey, so they said you'll be fine. I didn't score, but I was good on the boards and defense, is what they told me. I played with the mayor, the chief, and others, and Mr. Omar, CRSD, and many others. But it was really a wonderful community event, and I will say, that game went longer than an NBA game. I don't know, if those of you were there, it was a long event, but they had a lot of positive things for the community.
And Dearborn won.
Yeah, and Dearborn won. I forgot to mention that.
Yeah.
Not that we're competitive or anything, but...
So this is an annual event, seems like now it's the fourth annual Dearborn versus MTRAMIC, and Dearborn won, so the record is 3-1 right now.
Okay. And that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Superintendent Maleko. Next item, please.
The next item is recognition and acknowledgements. We'll be starting with commendations.
My name is Galiana Mireles. I am a senior at Henry Ford Early College, and this is...
Hi again. I am Micah Mitchell, also a senior at Henry Ford Early College.
I will first open with the district commendations. Commendations to the adult education staff for achieving a record-breaking enrollment of more than 2,010 students this year. The enrollment process for each student takes more than two hours, including a comprehensive assessment. The staff dedicated numerous evenings to facilitate the registration of students for GED and ESL classes. Next is the high school. Commendations to Donna Smith, an Etzel Ford paraprofessional for quickly responding to a student who had passed out in the hall. Ms. Smith quickly made sure that the student was okay and followed up with all necessary procedures. We thank her for her concern, care, and as well as her leadership. Commendations to the Etzel Ford principal advisory and peer-to-peer students who hosted Unity Week, January 13th to January 17th. Unity Week brought awareness that even though we may have different outlooks on life, we all stand united, showing respect, concern, and compassion. The week was filled with various activities for students to engage in. Kudos to the Etzel students for taking on this initiative. Commendations as well to Ismeen Barry, Margarita Chavez, and Zainab Serini for supporting the students in this initiative. Commendations to the Dearborn Unified Figure Skating Team, to three district students selected to compete internationally. The team is not technically part of the district, but still includes a number of district students. Dearborn Unified won every one of its district meets this year, and the C team was runner-up in that division. Both teams qualified to compete at the state championship in March. Students Jillian Furlough from Dearborn High and Olivia Mackled and Molly Holland from Etzel Ford were named to Team USA by the U.S. Figure Skating Governing Body. These skaters will compete in the junior division at the Hevius Cup Competition in Gdash, Poland, this week, and the U.S. Figure Skating Nationals in Colorado Springs at the end of February for a chance to qualify for the world championships. Our final commendations go to the following seniors, who were awarded a $1,000 scholarship through the My Potential Mentoring Program that is facilitated by Ms. Kathy Khalil through the Dearborn Rotary. The students are Nor Dungam and Fatima Bazey from Fortson, and Jenna Decala from Dearborn High. Thank you.
For the middle school, commendation to the basketball coaches, Kevin Barkov at Bryant and Yusuf Nassar at Woodworth. Both men, their teams, and even the spectators received a glowing report from the MHSAA refs officiating the district tournament game in January. The officials praised the coaches and teams for their passion and sportsmanship. "Both coaches and players should be commended for their efforts and commitment to the sport of basketball," the officials wrote. Woodworth ended up winning their hardball game 34 to 33. Commendations to the district's middle school musicians, who performed at the MSBOA District Solo and Ensemble Festival in February. From Lowry, students earning a two for very good performance were Aya Hamud for flute solo, and Talah Habala, Aya Harb, Yara Aloue, and Zara Yasir for woodwind quartet. Earning a one for excellent performance were Rwan Aldiyami, Hala Amosri for viola duet, Leanne Altayil, Maya Ferris for trumpet duet, Ahmed Habala, Hussein Azadeen, Hassan Malah, Ahmed Materik, and Ali Materik for brass quintet, and Hussein Azadeen for trumpet solo, and Ahmed Materik for trombone solo. For STEM Middle School, earning a two were Olivia Linderman, Miriam Abud Abdouhak, Max Ordio, Mia Tenervich, Maal Ali, and Yasmina Aloue. Earning a one were Tim Bloom, Alex Dewey, David Louska, Carson Post, and Alex Brookley. For elementary, commendations to the district media specialist, Brad Neff, and his wife, who repaired the free little library outside of William Ford Elementary School. Lower elementary students can use the library to now take a free book or leave one that they want others to enjoy.
All right. Thank you. Next item?
Next, we have approval of minutes.
Now, we still have employees.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. Next, we have employee recognition.
Good evening, President Mosip, Dr. Maleko. I'm filling in for Ms. Ali Bazey today. Very blessed to get to do this, actually. I see Don Shewitt is here. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the three winners this month of the district nomination. I believe you've probably seen them on the district website, as well as Dr. Maleko's Instagram. The very first employee is the great Don Shewitt, who's standing next to me. She's an early childhood special education teacher. She's been in the district for over 35 years now, has absolutely touched so many lives, and made this place just a better place all the way around. She was nominated for her dedication to her students. So great job, Ms. Don Shewitt. I'm not sure if you have anything to say, or...
I'd just like to thank my colleague for, you know, the opportunity to, you know, stand up here and accept this. I've been here 35 years, 34 years with ECSC in the same classroom. I've touched many lives, those students, and I've met wonderful families, so, thank you.
Truly appreciate your service. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. For the non-instructional employees, we have our great locksmith, Mr. Dennis Burkholder. Mr. Burkholder has been in the district for over 27 years now. He was nominated for doing a great job. Dennis works with the operations team and the entire district. Congratulations.
I want to say thank you, and I appreciate this, and I'm honored to have this award. Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
And our administrator recognized this month was Mr. Joseph Martin, Mr. Joe Martin over at River Oaks Elementary. Mr. Martin's been in the district for over 13 years now. He was nominated for showing appreciation for his staff during difficult times. He always makes sure that the staff are as okay, and then problem solve. So thank you, Mr. Martin.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity, and I share it with my staff. They make me better each day by their collaborative and working hard and focusing on student learning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Thank you, and congratulations. They're very well deserved.
Next, we have acknowledgement of donations.
Good evening, President Mosip and the board. We have eight donations I'll share with you today. A donation of $1,600 has been offered to Salina Intermediate School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for phonics books. Number two is a donation of $275 has been offered to McCullough Unit School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for making books accessible for a library project. Number three, a donation of $240 has been offered to McCullough Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for bingo for books. Number four, a donation of pallet construction paper and markers has been offered to Cotter School by Wazik Yusuf to be used for the GSRP classrooms. A donation of $650 has been offered to Deval Elementary School by Fred Bello to be used for items in our new sensory room. Number six, a donation of a couch, loveseat, and loveseat has been offered to Fortson High School by Detroit Furniture to be used by students with physical needs to create an environment that fosters concentration, reduces anxiety, and supports the student's ability to engage with learning. Number seven, a donation of 103 handmade blankets and hats has been offered to Howe School by DIWA Pro Michigan to be used for each student to keep them warm during transition and floor time activities. And lastly, number eight, donation of a full-size refrigerator has been offered to Howe School by Nusr Amud and Nima Mohassan to be used to support the post-secondary programs with cooking and life school activities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wall. We definitely thank those partners and private citizens who have donated to our district. Next item, please.
Next item is the approval of minutes. The approval of minutes of the following dear Board of Education meetings. Special meeting, that was a closed meeting, on January 13th, 2025, Board Report 24-85. The organizational meeting, on January 13th, 2025, Board Report 24-86. And the regular P to 12 meeting, January 13th, 2025, Board Report 24-87. We are looking for anyone to make any necessary corrections and move approval of these minutes.
So move.
Support.
Second.
Motion made by trustee Dambrosio. May I have trustee Al-Jamii support that motion?
I'll let Mr. Al-Jamii have it.
Okay, thank you.
You can have it.
Any corrections or questions? I do have a correction, small one, just the last name of Mayor Hamud was spelled correctly on page 12. Any other questions or corrections? All right.